Well, everyone, we're going to go after we call the meeting to order at 6:01. Please rise, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to remind everyone that these board meetings are business meetings held in public and not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 74 and Title 33, Chapter 5, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, or IDAPA, and follows district policies. I would like to thank everyone for sending the board emails with your thoughts, perspectives, and suggestions. We are reading them, and they will guide the decisions that need to be made. Please keep them coming. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not time to engage with the board, nor is it time for questions and answers. The board, in its discretion, may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussion or conversation takes place. All public input will be civil and respectful, addressed to the board, not the audience, addressed issues, and not people. Everyone will be given three minutes for input. There is a large group wanting to speak at the same, but we will go ahead and try to maintain the three-minute rule with everyone, because I think we will be able to accomplish this within an hour. We'll be calling people up one at a time, but we'll also put people on deck so that we can kind of move through the public comment in a smooth fashion. On that note, the first person to speak will be Chris Beatty, and then Tina Hillman after that. Rebecca?
Good job.
Sorry.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Beatty. I've lived there for 28 years. I've been an engineer for thirty, which means what I do is I design brains for robots. So I analyze my data. And so one of the things I did is I analyzed the data from the IDA home, and I want to present it right now. So first of all, this chart here shows the difference between passing and no. That is 0.6% difference between people who voted no versus yes. To me, I don't see that as a lot. But if we're going to go with the theory that, okay, the numbers are number, people spoken, the votes there, then let's do that. We're going to say that's what the people said. Let's see what they said. So I analyzed how each precinct actually schooled voted for precincts. This chart here, this top red area, represents a 0.6% point. Both four tests is enough. There's four schools, but first of all, all these bars are on the same scale. There are four schools that voted overwhelmingly defund. And that's what we're talking about here. Cuts, cuts, cuts. Teachers, parents, that's the real discussions, cuts. So if we're going to go by the rules that 0.6% is enough, and we're going to go by what the data says, then there's four schools that are in a lot of trouble. The reality is that I think we should have voted on something else. We should have voted on what does the future look like with a levy? What does the future look like without the levy? It's not what we did. We can't even compare the two because we have no idea what it looks like without the levy. Even today, how can we compare? So my ask is that let's clarify the two factors. Let's actually lay out what those two things look like, and then actually vote for real, not on whether we want this or not. Let's actually vote on our future. Otherwise, we've got the four schools in a lot of trouble. You guys are very, these commentators, they want to hear from us, and our kids in the past have responded.
Thank you, miss. After Tina Hillman will be Shannon Reiger.
Well, I'm ready to speak soon, but I am Tina Hillman. I'm the president of the Lake Boothert Club, so I do represent approximately 300 people that are members of the school. For those of you that don't know, the Boothert Club was able to give almost $100,000 back to Lakeville High School last year. We are just volunteers, as you guys are as well. But through all of this, the Boothert Club is also kind of hanging in the middle. What are we going to do if there is no levies? There will be nothing for us to support if we are mainly athletics. Why haven't we increased our gate fees? Why are we stuck so low? We have a booster club that you can easily partner with to push memberships, to help people at the gate to keep their costs down, but instead we choose to give our savings to the guests while we travel and pay for theirs. Something to think about. How about A S D fees? You have all these kids coming up, junior tackles, for example, paying $150 a year for equipment and all that stuff. They didn't come here, and you only ask $40. Why? There's transportation that parents pay when they're in the middle school age. They don't have to pay here. Why? These are the things that I see, that I think we need to be looking at more as well. Classes, I have a whole thing here. I do feel that you guys need to partner more with the rules that you have, such as the booster club. Rather than working against us, we've had a lot of rights in the last year, and I'm sure some people will look to talk to you guys about credit. When we're trying to give you money, it seems like trouble. Yet, we've also extended a hand to our northern sister to offer help to improve their program when we can get it shut down. So something to think about, especially if there's a school board policy that governs the programs that are here to exist to support the schools. Last thing I want to say, I've just been there, done that. I'm someone who moved here from a district, so yes, I'm a transplant, but I've been there, done that. The school district I moved from failed their levies upon seven or eight times. This last year, they were trying to pass a law to build a new school. In tandem, they're being exposed for all the sexual bad behaviors between teachers and students in the school. Because what happens when you start to show the school that you don't support it, you don't support the teachers, is they run. They go to schools where they haven't wanted. Something to keep in mind.
Thank you. After Shannon Reiger will be Jessica Denhart.
Hello, my name is Shannon Reiger. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm speaking to you tonight as a mother, educator, wife, and resident of Spirit Lake. I am a mother of a fifth grader at Spirit Lake Elementary and a seventh grader at Timberlake Middle School. My husband is a coach and teacher at Timberlake High School. We are a Timberlake family through and through. I have worked my heart into the Lakeville Joint School District for the past seventeen years, and my husband has done the same for the last twenty. We have spent countless hours, countless nights, and weekends doing whatever it takes to ensure the success of our student, schools, and community. I don't want to go anywhere else, but my number-one responsibility is to ensure that my children have access to a school district where they can participate in sports, play instruments, take courses from exemplary teachers, and have access to cutting-edge materials and curriculum. Without the levy, we can't promise families that we will be able to provide their children with these opportunities. Throughout my career, I have been a champion for students and for my school. In the situation we have found ourselves in, our children don't need a champion, they need a warrior. We need to fight for our children and for our community. These children deserve access to high-quality education, to the high-quality education that we have come to expect from the Lakeville Joint School District. Without this levy, our school district would fundamentally change. I am scared by the apathy and the sentiment that we will figure it out, or it will all be okay. Those statements are simply not true. Our community needs to understand that without these levy dollars for district, and the opportunities that our students have access to will change dramatically. Our school district is, and always has been, this deeply responsible. We do not base tax fears on any. We make conservative choices with all financial decisions. There are not millions of dollars hiding somewhere in the budget that will offset these kinds of cuts. Us here, we had to make cuts due to the change to ADA funding. Those cuts are already very difficult to make while maintaining the Lincoln standards for operation. I believe that the voters did not vote no because they don't support education. I believe that people voted no because they didn't understand what was on the table. Voters have expressed that they would have liked to know what the money pays for and when this levy would cut. I have heard that the board doesn't want to threaten the community with what would change without levy dollars. I don't see this as threatening, I see it as educational. Community needs to know what we use levy money for, and that every dollar goes towards something important. These funds quite literally change the lives. In my career, I can think of any number of students who would not be where they are today without the opportunities provided to them. I have committed to levy-supported programs in sports. I have passionately poured myself into this school district, into the success of the children in this community, into the success of many of the families in this parish children. I'm begging you to please be a school board that is willing to passionately stand up and fight for the education of my children and the thousands of other children in this parish. Thank you.
After Jessica Denhart, please Rebecca.
My name is Jessica Denhart, and I'm the director of transportation for the district. I sit on the Idaho Student Transportation Advisory Committee with the State Department of Education, and will be one of the Idaho delegates representing the state of the 17th Annual National Congress on School Transportation in Iowa this year. I want to take a few moments of everyone's time to talk about an idea people asked for a year ago. Trustee Christy said that she would like to hear her parents regarding putting kindergarten and 12th graders on the bus at the same time. Has come to serious concerns from the transportation. Some middle and high school-age students tend to curse and say inappropriate things. We also have caught several older students making on superbuses already this year. These are not things we should be subjecting younger students to on buses. Our drivers have so much to pay attention to. Between having upwards of 71 students behind them, both being louder than they should be, heavy traffic, construction zones everywhere, weather conditions, drivers running their stop arms, loading and unloading students, trying to hear or see everything students say or do to one another is never been possible. And I know that double routing gets a harsh rap, and even though it sounds like it costs the district a lot of money, a lot more money, due to so many miles on the buses, that really isn't true. According to the mileage summary on the State Department of Education's website, in the 2324 school year, we had the fewest miles on buses we've had in sixteen years, with the one exception of the 2019-2020 school year. The mileage summary only goes back to the 2008-2009 school year, so it might even be a longer record than sixteen years. So even though double routing sounds like we go everywhere in our district twice, we really don't. We use less buses, less fuel, have less miles, and have less burn-terran buses to build tiered routing. We know that there will need to be cuts, and we are prepared to help in the discussion of those cuts. We just don't think that going to single-tiered routes or putting all grades on the same buses are a safe or positive factor. Thank you.
After Rebecca is Colleen Babacua.
Good evening. As Michelle said, my name is Rebecca Haas, and my connection to the Lakeville School District runs deep. My mother, Elizabeth Fox, was hired and worked under then Superintendent Bob Jones. She taught in the district for almost 30 years, and was one of the major reasons I wanted to teach in this school district. This is my 25th year as a teacher here. I have lived in this community since 2004 with my family. My daughter just graduated from Lakeville High School, and I have a seventh grader at Timberlake Middle School. My daughter took advantage of and benefited from all of the grade programs we at the district have offered students over the years. From the dance team to speech state, all-state choir to tennis, she enjoyed her time at Lakeville High School, and because of the advanced opportunities offered to her here, she is now considered a sophomore at Montana Tech, where she is majoring in mining engineering. My son will not have those same opportunities if we do not find a solution to our current problem. We need to know what the plan is moving forward with the levy. It is not okay to say we await until March for the legislative session, or even May to run a new one, even at a smaller amount. Staff and the community need to plan, and people's livelihoods are on the line. Parents need to know if the programs to be offered now will be offered in the future. Teachers in their first five years need to know if they should be looking elsewhere. I hate saying this, but we send out members saying what the levy being for. If they don't vote it against, then those should be the first things we look at. I have never liked the idea of our units to have resting on the vote of the community, and when we tie positions to the levy, that's exactly what we did, and now we have to make tough choices. I don't want to see anything different, but elections do have consequences. And if the community has spoken, as some of you have agreed, they have, then we need to cut all the things we said, which we fought by the levy. Curriculum, volunteer state funding, safety program, athletics, co-curricular activities, transportation, small classes, specialists, electives not needed for graduation, all of those are things that we said this levy funded. We may need to even close buildings in fatality. I supported all of those things. I voted yes, as a taxpayer, as a parent, and as a staff member. However, we are being disingenuous to those that say that, to say that the levy funded these things, but without the levy, we can still keep them. Difficult times hold their difficult decisions. I owe all the same benefits for my son that my daughter had owed in our school system. But in the end, if you choose not to rerun this levy, then we need to honor the majority who said no, and cut the vote that voted no on. Thank you.
After Colleen is Seth Bullock.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. I am Colleen Babacua. I am a Lakeville graduate, and I have been a teacher at LHS for 21 years. And I was a varsity softball coach for 17 years. My husband is a coach for football and baseball. I am also a parent, and a taxpayer in our community who voted yes. I want my boys to have the opportunities that I had at LHS. My heart is broken over the state of our school district. This is not the Lakeville way. I am reaching out because these decisions will have lasting consequences on the quality of education, our students' well-being, and our community's overall health. We are talking about the livelihoods of people that all of us care about. No one wants to see our friends, dedicated colleagues, lose their jobs. This uncertainty is creating a very toxic environment for our staff and students. This is a time when we need to pull together, not tear each position apart. If budget cuts are inevitable, we need to ensure that these cuts do not compromise the classroom. We need to look, take a long, hard look at cutbacks through attrition, put us on a hiring route. Administration, teachers, support staff, and students do not bear the direct burden of financial limitation, as doing so to give paths educational quality and student success. I propose we rerun the levy for a reduced amount. We understand that revised, revised levy at a lower amount may be more feasible. By adjusting our request, we can show a commitment to balancing fiscal responsibility with our mission to serve students. Rerunning the levy could provide a much needed fund, a much needed funds, to avoid even more painful cuts. This approach can also help rally community support, and it demonstrates our willingness to compromise while still prioritizing the needs of our students. Based upon the constituents of this district and voting by zone, four of you in, on the board should represent your constituents. If you are truly representing your constituents, the vote should be four to one to rerun the levy, or run the levy for a slightly lesser amount. Let us work together to keep our school strong and sustainable. Making these challenging decisions today will allow us to preserve our district's values and continue our commitment to the education and well-being of every child in our community. Our students, parents, and staff are already facing immense stress and uncertainty. The right of the levy will give us path to making the quality that makes our district exceptional. I urge you to consider what's best for our students, staff, and our community's future. These decisions need to be made with a great sense of urgency. We cannot wait until spring. It is too late. The damage will be done. We need to do what is best for our kids. Thank you.
After Seth Bullock is Brian Peterson.
I'm Seth Bullock, I'm a retired teacher with Class of the United States of America. I work with youth who train a work for retention, because of things I know about. Brad, a teacher, you have kids in the district. Our major concern are a, the office banking out last time, the fairies that got detention on Friday. The finality of the people who spoke, and you might have to cut this, you might have to cut that. We might have to make class sizes bigger. Our district is a backbone of our community, and they will easily lose retention if they don't have certainty in their own. And that's a very huge issue for the entirety of the community. That'll bring kids that aren't getting the attention they need. We can easily have a cascade effect of things like future fund. The entirety of our community will fall apart from the inside if we are not supporting our future. I was a kid that went to school, like the teacher that was up here talking about students that she reached out to. I was that child, and I got the help through my teachers, and I went on to be successful in my life, thank God for that. And so the idea that when it was so split down the middle, it was basically a 50-50 yes-to-no, that the people that spoke have spoken and it's over, is a joke. A lot of people showed up for that vote, not so much for the vote going as close, but for the vote on the president. A lot of people showed up and the language in the voters' campaign was a little confusing to a lot of people that I talked to afterwards, because I talked to a lot of people before the vote, and a lot of people after. And a lot of people afterward said, I didn't really understand what it was for. I think we should lower the amount, make sure we're giving out good, accurate information, and right. Thank you.
After Brian Peterson is Jason Bradbury. Is Brian Peterson not here? You can ask your questions, but we can't. Okay, thank you. You can email the board. Thank you. After Jason will be Jeremy Tersulie.
Hi, I am Jason Bradbury. I wear quite a few hats. First and foremost, I've been a teacher here for 27 years, have kids that grow up through this school district, kindergarten, 12th grade. I've coached in the district for 22 years, all of the high school. And one of the most important things that I do now is I represent at least two-thirds of our teaching staff, 192 members that we have currently in our Lakeville Education Association out of about 300. And all hats are wired at night. Also a taxpayer, an evening member for 27 years as well. And with that said, I don't want to repeat a lot of the things that were said tonight so graciously and that I agree with, but what I do ask of you is, firstly, as an LAA, our group wishes that you would strongly reconsider running the levy, rather than a lesser amount, just because the split was so down the middle, and it was such a narrow margin. Secondly, if you decide not to run the levy, we really appreciate what your kind words were last week in the meeting, saying that you value teachers, you don't want to lose any teachers, you don't want to lose any sport programs. I wholeheartedly agree with that, and I think everybody in the audience would agree with that as well. But if you don't run the levy, it's inevitable that we will lose staff, and we most likely will lose programs, whether it's actual sports or other extra programs or programs. And so with that said, please keep in mind that these are people's livelihoods in state, and these are our children. Our sports is that they are at stake, heard from so many people. So we would ask, and I would ask, that if that's going to be the case, waiting until March, April, or May is too late. With livelihoods in state, people have, some of them are going to have to approve, move, we're going to lose good staff, just in fear of losing their jobs, and that's very sad. And there's only so many openings in our nearby schools, neighborhood schools. And so we need to give those people time so that they can plan, because their livelihood is in our state. We are in an economy that's atrocious right now, with inflation throwing, and we just can't seem to afford anything anymore of our problems here today. So I would ask you that if you do make the decision not to run the levy, that we can solve plan at least by February. That would give enough people enough time to plan. We can plan how we're going to move forward, would allow our sports kids the opportunity to maybe transfer to another school if they want to do so. So I just think we have so much in state. I encourage you to run the levy again, and do the best you can for our staff, I think, the school district, our community, and our kids.
After Jeremy is Roger Bussel.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Tersulie. I do have two students in the district, one graduated last year. I think I'm in the minority in the room type. I do believe we should wait until spring to rerun them. I don't know that we have to, but we have some justification for that. Per my account, per what was reported, it was a vote differential of 344 votes, which means that 123 flip votes would have been resulted. If we wait until March or April, the only prerequisite for voting in the state of Idaho is legal residency at the 18th year stage. We will have some high school seniors that have benefited from the school district, that have siblings in the district, and we can encourage Timberlake High School, Lakeville High School to get out the vote for those high school seniors that will be illegal age. In the meantime, we can improve our messaging to many of the residents in the area, and the taxpayers in the area. I know many people in Cookfield County, in developments, they're from out of state, they don't truly understand how the levy works in the state of Iowa. I think we can improve our messaging, calling on our community members to fit with the board, staff members, to run some focus groups and some workshops, how we can improve that messaging. Additionally, I know that the majority of our board members did receive an endorsement from the KCRCC, which has been an active point of school levies, and they did not take position in 2024, but they have in the past. take a position in 2024 that they have in the past. Do believe that this board can balance that dichotomy, we can overcome that. I think we would be encouraged to invite Mr. Rehman in and ask some of his opinions. I do think that his critiques of the school districts, he's been a more active opponent in Fort Lang, I think are valid, and I think we need to hear them out. So what I think we're asking for is give us two years' worth of runway whereby we will then start to revisit how the district operates, what the budget looks like, we can formulate some better transparency, because I know the board just directs me. It's, the accounting is on the website. It's incredibly confusing. It's sixty-eight pages long. Unless you have an accounting or a book integrated, it's really hard to follow. I think we can make it simpler. I think we can improve that messaging, we can direct them to another website where it's very, very simple to understand where the money is going. I think Mr. Rehman has legitimate critiques of the school districts. I do think some of his metrics are a little flawed, but if we did work together to improve that marketing and the messaging to the rest of the people, I think we can improve it. So I would encourage us to rerun it this spring, simply based on the numbers, and then I think we improve our messaging and we'll really get it fixed. So that's my position.
Thank you. After Roger is Kelty Quintez.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Roger Bassey, and I'm a resident of the honor of Matt Fair and Apple. And I moved here in 2021. I came from mindset, all school districts are back. They don't throw their money in the waste. And for some reason, I think it must have been a divine appointment, I showed up in an informational meeting, only in my mind, when I found out that this is not a school district. People care, they, what's happening to the children, care about the opportunities that those kids get, and they make the way, and they do it probably having less money than anything I've ever seen before. And I was totally turned around, became a supporter of what this school district is all about. If I haven't had that meeting, I would hold it up. It's a matter of information. So, there were several meetings, I attended a bunch of them. There was a levy that failed after that, but nobody gave up. And it was rerunning, it was rerunning again with an incredibly low voter turnout in the past. And I think it's because information you've got out there. There was an effort put together, I founded today, Love Copy, of the 2023 Levy Talking Points, multiple pages. And I carried that, those talking points, and after I got it, until that next election, I'm the levy task, the vote turnout, my findings, that information, I shared with as many people as I could. Not everybody in that meeting wants to come, get the information, and they'll share it with the other meeting. That's my experience with it. Hope you can understand that I'm saying rerun the levy, get the information out there. What was it, point six? Zero point six. Thank you very much.
After Kelly is Mary Meyer.
Hi, I'm Ms. Topper. My name is Kelty Montez, and this process has been incredibly frustrating, the way the levy is handled and by the situation we find ourselves in. You may think this is water under the bridge, but I am extremely disappointed that the board does not come in public that tests that would have to be made should the levy fail. A good decision cannot be made without actual information, and the board refused to have a plan in place and communicate to patrons with the fact of being, and that was completely irresponsible. Moving forward, I am standing up here to show my support to our district office and all of our teachers. I hesitated to speak because I want this to be productive and not follow the deadlines. This is my opportunity to have a voice, but it feels like the outcome is already out of our hands. But if we aren't here to stand up and speak and to ask for you to listen to what we're saying, then we will have to give up, and we refuse at this point to give up. I implore you to take direction from our superintendents and our seat of vote. That is their job. Please listen. Sheriff Thompson, lastly, you said our teachers are shining in classrooms and you see their intention now. They are able to shine because they have the community's full support. They are able to be intentional because they don't have the stress of oversized classroom. Without full funding, they will not be able to continue to perform at optimal levels. For expectation without full support is unreasonable and impossible. I know it costs money to rerun the levy, but please ask for a lower amount and lessen the detrimental impact. Half would be better than nothing. On a personal note, I am a parent, and we lived here several years ago for a better future for our voice. This district was the main reason. I kid you not, I got him a phone and I called the district office and I asked, where's this question about this district? And the answer said, I got him off the phone. Brian has been asking him to please move the Lake Lake joint school district, and we can, and we have benefited from the incredible values and investment from the teachers and the community. We cannot lose that. My son graduated last year and he's doing exceptional. My son is sheriff's engineer and he has a bright future, but all the children behind them matter just as much. I'm prepared to say please rerun the levy to not allow this to fall away, because this is what we need.
After Mary is Tegan Fager.
Hello, I'm Ms. Mary Meyer. I'd like to congratulate friends who cannot have been the spirit here yet. I would like to ask the board to allow a minute sometime to come together and find ways to work through these challenges. With record voter turnout, we know many in the community lost their votes, and even though the narrow majority voted no, essentially half of your constituents also voted yes. So you as a board will still need to find ways to represent both sides of the vote going forward, which is not going to be an easy task. I would like to see if you could give those of us in this room an opportunity to roll our sleeves. We're here to help, and we want to support you and do the work. The reality of not having levy dollars is a real threat, and you're supporting to have a solid plan against. But you don't have to do all the work yourself. And we're sure you, we've seen what Westwater School was experiencing at the sacrifice when their levy failed last year, they had to cut staff, there were three-hour bus routes, extracurriculars and electives were cut, major school closure and consolidation. But through all of that, it also sparks engagement for families and businesses to lean in and find ways to overcome obstacles. If we all do the work and create a clear picture of what the following years will look like on both sides of the point, what would it look like without levy cuts, but also improvements and goodgest steps if the levy were to pass, then you can make an informed and decisive recommendation on other amounts to rerun and the amount that's needed. With the community almost evenly divided on this though, the risk of not going through this process will likely mean having half of your constituents angry and frustrated with your decision. If the work is done and the plan is clear, while one side might not be happy, they can at least know and respect that the decision came from hard work and clear understanding of all the factors being considered. It comes down to trusting our board leaders and knowing that you are clearly informed, engaged, and advocating for what's best for our community. Communities are built around schools, and schools are a reflection of our community. Strong communities have strong schools. Struggle communities have struggling schools. And we need to make sure that local schools remain strong because that's what benefits everybody in this community. Thank you.
After Tegan is Nina Duzic.
Hi, I'm Tepa Tepa, and I am here at Lake Lake High School. I'm worried about my senior year will look like without this levy. I am called in KEECLP, EPA, SLE, and RSTM. I'm the sports editor for the Lake Lake Health Fund, and I also participate in the KEECLP program. In the last meeting, the board said that they will not post schools with bad teachers before school. They only mentioned one possible way of saving a little bit of levy that is combining primary and secondary level programs. I was just going to say, but I can't. The plan seems to be to try and find landing areas and help creatures. This is not the first year the levy has failed, so where was the back line? I have spoken with Michelle Thompson, and she said, and I quote, "When it was going to second time, it is passed." So I guess that was a backline, I don't know if that was true. I think the levy needs to be run, or a better plan for the money needs to be put in place. I would not like to look through my senior year assessment about the culture and sports and classes. I have participated in it since freshman year. What can you do as a board to want a higher level? What can we as a community do to make changes on a higher level? Why do the same thing every two years when it has out of order? Thank you.
Nina Duzic, community member. Evening Chairman Thompson, Superintendent Arnold, and Board members. I'd like to say about your new high school for hosting a picnic breakfast and posting colors on Veterans Day. The entire school came out with a posting, and it was nice to see a group of ten men and women show such respect for the veterans in this ceremony. Regarding the ongoing supplemental curriculum request, according to cdc.gov, we are raising a generation of children who are more depressed and medicated than ever before. You can see that here in the light one, as more counseling organizations are submitting MOUs to meet the needs of students who are being recommended for services. We are asked to review and hopefully approve dystopian novels, websites that are created by organizations who support DEI and work ideologies, and curriculum that lets itself not to what is good and acceptable and beautiful, but rather to darkness, depressing subject matter. In light of what parents and staff members see happening with students, and the knowledge given to us by the CDC, it's concerning that so many of these requests are being approved regularly. So let these four aid states, whatever is true, whatever is normal, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is as fine or priceworthy, think about such things. Surely we can find books that fulfill this criterion without crossing the false understanding of separation of church and state, accomplish what needs to be taught, and in the process uplift our students. Thank you.
Last is Heather Hamilton.
Ms. Thompson, thank you for allowing me that opportunity to come back. As you are aware, I am a mental health advocate, I'm an advocate for our students and an advocate for our families, who've been asking time and time and time again that we bring in another agency to help meet the need in our buildings that we are not currently able to fill. You have two agencies that are looking to help meet the need of more counseling and dragonized support services, both of which would be viable options for our students. Right now, we have thirty students being served by Heritage Health. Previously, we had sixty-seven. We had a hundred and fourteen individuals request Heritage Health counseling, and we had even one individual on the leave list. Our schools are desperate to find students access to the help that they need, and they can't access in the community. I'm imploring you to approve these contracts. They are time sensitive, and if they are not asked, we will lose this opportunity. Right now, I don't feel like our students can afford them. Thank you for your time.
Is there any more public input? We will move on to reports. Oh, you're right, you're right. Is it on? Oh, there we go. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any posts? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to reports. First up is the financial report. Are there any questions, comments, or points of conversation? I don't have any. Okay.
For this report, we need, I really have one thing to call on to our financial reporter for the end of the year, and it is our best guess estimate as what we believe will happen over this current schedule. It's out of column that shows adjustments that we need to make to fill out what it's actually been our actual operational activity, that working budget column have a description for what is part of that adjustment so that you can see it, intention with this working budget column, so that we can revise budgets at the end of the fiscal year, that reflects our crew activity, and also provide a better mechanism for budgeting in the future.
I think we need to do that, however, we've already got six columns, seven actually, so everything's going to be much smaller. Is there a chance we could just maybe do another report that is uploaded online in line with this one, to where we don't have all the information, just actual versus?
We need to get a second page for each document that shows just the budget, here proposed documents, and the video to include, so you can see how it goes through, whether the description of what has been changed, that proposed changes. It'll be a separate page.
Okay, but you don't have like what you're comparing it to on that page, correct? Because I don't want just a column on one page. Okay, perfect, thank you. There is no comments. Thank you for the reports. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meetings, minutes of the subcommittee meetings to be accepted, the HR items, and regular and special bills. Are there any corrections, comments, input on the minutes from the previous meetings? Is everyone able to accept the subcommittee? No comments on us? Moving on to the HR items, any comments, inputs, or questions on the HR items?
I don't have any questions, but I appreciated all the information. I was really thrilled with some of the advocates for the S teachers. It was awesome, so thank you for that information. Worked with him, the director of the HR. I did provide you those resumes and applications, but I'd just like to let you know, we did have a coach that's already a certified staff member, so they're already employed. Like to move those out.
Moving on to the bills list, the regular and special bills. Moving on to the bills list, the regular and special bills. Go ahead, with questions and comments. Jessica, do you want to?
Thank you. I have a question on the MacBook Pros that were purchased for the district office. We were told that we were going away from those. Why have we ordered two more?
They were included through five of my appointments.
On the SLP services for September, at thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars, how many students is that servicing?
We're happy to bring back information for next week.
On the TBR training, there's one bill for two hundred dollars, one for one hundred dollars. Is that individuals getting certified, and how many?
That has a hundred followers for participant. We had two checks.
So there were three participants, then that got certified. Okay. When I asked last month about making the talks a little, I was told that we only pay them for the language for the supplemental levy, but I showed that we're paying them, it seems like, almost monthly. So what other services are they providing us?
That was all the admission for supplemental levy and disclosures that we had to make were done, but I just gave a number of them.
Okay. On the salmon electric for the service to run the power to the TMS scoreboard, we're being reimbursed for half of it, like, Timberlake Junior Tackle, but what we brought to the board, we were told we would not cost the district anything. Has that changed?
We didn't ever say that.
Okay.
We, uh, we want, what we share with the board is we're a partner to, like, Junior Tackle, to be able to move them from Apple to Timberlake Middle School. They are moving the goalposts, and so we had not paid the goalposts because they had already had twelve implements, and they had somebody to donate that, so then we said that we would have not assisted the.
Okay. Those are all their questions.
Hi, Jessica. Ninety-four thirty-eight, uh, bill to Goldie C.
That is our class-wide description, so that is a platform that the teachers could use to see what the students are looking at in their book, shutting down their book in case they're reading stuff that is not on task or part of what is being learned in the classroom.
Okay. Gas and electric for business, thirty-six thousand dollars. That's monthly, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do we do bulk purchasing? Bulk purchasing?
Bulk purchasing.
Yeah. For electricity and gas. Do we prepay for it? So there's some ideas I have to save money.
We may be savings.
Right. But we can go to a fixed rate or prepaid treatment with the mist and the gas companies. So we pay at a lower rate, so it costs less to get our buildings.
Right.
Correct. And then bulk purchasing, energy procurement programs, energy aggregation, and so I have a whole list of ways to save money. That was one. And then, our gas, our gas is for buses in one month, is thirty-six thousand dollars. One month, to drive buses. Okay, we need to figure out something where we're not. We need a half-ride chair or something like that. We gotta, we gotta do something. I mean, we can't be driving down every back road in Roundwood. We have the second-largest land-mass school district in the state by the way. We gotta, we gotta cut. And I'm just, I'm just throwing things out there. So, that being twenty thousand dollars a month for internet services?
We are reimbursed on that being through our E-Rate program, and then whatever's not earned through E-Rate, we'll reimburse them to the state again.
Okay, well, I think we ought to just look at going out for mid.
That goes out to mid, every five years, we'll be mid that in 2026.
I just had a quick question. The deposit for cellular fire alarm communications, what was the deposit for that?
Um, that is a portion of the bill. We are currently in the process of going away from the landline for all of our fire panels to a cellular line of dead. And, uh, there's multiple reasons we can have any tricks on the line. It is a twenty-five dollar a month charge to switch it over versus a hundred and eighty dollars a month for the landline. We are having problems with the copper, the cable link that wasn't good, so this is a more consistent solution.
Right, but, sorry, this is a safety. To go pure landline, there's something to have used to the power, or a pure cellular, and there's no communication. On the landline, you can still have communication.
This is only one of the fire panels, and it is monitored by a security company that identifies us if they go off line.
Well, I would like to know that through research that a little bit more, because I do have a trustee with me.
At last month's board meeting, I believe you were absent. It was brought before us because our maintenance is having to do twenty-four-hour surveillance at Garwood Elementary because the fire panel had failed, and so we had to have someone there twenty-four-seven. And Zipley, I believe, if I can state my answer correctly, Zipley wasn't going to be able to get to it for quite some time, yet we could switch it over to just the fire panel being on this particular type of system the next day, so save the district overtime, and we weren't having at a camp at Garwood for twenty-four hours, so that, you know, the panel.
I understand that. Mine was more of a safety concern, and Zipley was that bad. He should have brought us a little more, because I had to prod them myself on my own backup landline thing, and we had a major issue up there. They had no idea. It was over a week, they had dug up a major trunk line, then intermittently knocked people out, it wasn't consistent. So we might have been able, I just have a safety concern. You know, I, I know it sounds antiquated, but when we're talking fire and communication and all that, I mean, you know, internet's nice, and cellular's nice, but it does have a high degree.
Okay.
So, uh, we, we partnered with Junior Tackle, and picked up half the bill, but we don't offer that to Junior Tackle at Lakeland. They, they go out and save money and get us LED lights because they got a grant. We're the school district, and we're not even doing that ourselves. We have to, the district needs to go out and get money-saving ideas, not Junior Tackle, not the Lakeland resident club, or cheer, or anybody else that's raising money and giving it to us. We need to do that. We should have people trying to save money, and we don't. We just rely on everybody else, and then we find them, or we raise their rates to use our gips.
We do have Lakeland High School, this is our little school that are in the process of that LED grant. It was already granted, or temporarily licensed at the cost, so that, I'm hoping that Lakeland High School is in right now.
Yeah, but Lakeland Tackle went, and got it going. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Thompson, clarify one area on the list.
Yes.
The county sheriff's office, that didn't look like a higher amount, because we were not billed except number one of that several accounts, so it was, they caught up that billing on this payment, so I just wanted to clarify that. And they billed for the two, the three SROs, and thus the, not the four for the SROs, so it's just higher than what we would.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. I mean, it's only two hundred and fifty dollars, but I cannot believe we have nobody that had unplugged a safe ring. Are you saying a safe ring? Really? We had to pay somebody to come to the school to unplug the safe ring, and there's nobody here to run a snake? It's these little things that add up over time, you know? Uh, it's on the family's, let me see if I can see the page. There's a nominal amount, it was two hundred and fifty dollars, but if you look at the bill, each two, twenty, and if you look at the bill list, there's a lot of nominal amounts that over time they add up. You know, I mean, we gotta do better. No, that was just my, I mean, most everybody asked that question already, so I don't expect you to do it.
We pay charcoal, one hundred, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
That's our contract, it's services for food service.
Is that quarterly?
It's monthly.
Monthly.
It's part of our negotiated, and they're self-sustaining, they're projected to be self-sustaining over the next three years. We are obligated, and we discussed with the board whether RFP was selected during the last process, that in year three, potentially year four, we are obligated to, um, have available one hundred and fifty thousand dollars if they don't, if they are not self-sustaining. So we would potentially have to transfer into the food service budget in order to cover their costs of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And we also, they also are in one of our buildings, correct?
They're current, yes, they're.
Do they rent that building?
That's part of our agreement, that we provide.
They make a fee for electricity?
We can, that's kind of our.
Have any change?
Any other questions, comments, input on the bills list? Then I will enter a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to old business, we have the superintendent follow-up. Does anybody need any further discussion or input on the first follow-up?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Lisa.
Any comments or discussion on the class size review?
The numbers that were on the, um, stretch, if you got, I don't have numbers, just my note, what numbers are they? Are the actual numbers, are those the numbers we came up for student transfers? I mean, when were these numbers? Was it like actual head count, or are these just students that are assigned in the teacher, or do we have that many students sitting in the classes? There was somebody, they, um, is it John Brown?
John Brown, thirty-nine, yeah. Yep, in fifth grade.
Yeah, there are quite five. We have.
We don't, we do not have thirty-one in the classroom, so that might just be a formality of other.
Do we have thirty-three and a half kindergarten? For John Brown? Thirty-three and a half for second grade in John Brown?
No. No, so there's an error there. We have three kindergartens for John Brown. There are sixty-seven kids divided across three classrooms. Do we fly the big fountain?
Do we have thirty-seven seniors in a classroom in Mountview?
Um, oh, it's not here. Their classes are, their classes are done differently, and so, no, they don't have thirty-seven in a classroom, but they don't, they're, well, the way teachers schedule, it doesn't work for this type of formality.
But they have more than one point three eight teachers, correct?
Yeah, they have seven. All right.
Do we have thirty-one students in class, uh, sixth graders at Lakeland Middle School? Per class, for sixth grade?
Those don't also include your, in the elective, so the secondary is not as clean as elementary. Elementary is easy, you have the teachers assigned to, our kids assigned to it to church, going to green, class sizes for high school, they have elected teachers, so this, those numbers are based on the numbers of sections of ELA, to try to get a little bit of a picture of what it looks like, but kids are not all in ELA at the same time. They have, they have blood is, they have, their schedule isn't, it's self-sustaining. We, I did provide for you the master's stipals from the secondary, we had one or two of them that has the numbers of it, and they're, we may have a comp here and there, we have thirty-one kids in a class, just because that's the function of a master's stipal at the fair level, but we don't have, we don't consistently have thirty-one kids in the classroom.
Well, maybe we just update the stretch to check for the.
Yeah, I will check on that.
I guess what I think that might be, there was something, sorry, there was something off, so I just wanted to clarify what it's, who is writing this to you.
Yep. I actually, and now I changed that once, so, but if, when we made the copy, if they didn't change the one, and I changed and went back to the copy, we didn't come to work, so I.
Well, and I think at the secondary level, we need a different, uh, form than just this simple plug-ins the numbers and hold-ups out, because these numbers are up the community. This is what people are saying. Look at this. So, um, it needs to be cleaner and it needs to make sense. So if we can do something different for secondary, that would be very appreciated. Okay? Thank you for pursuing the bond on resolving the Emmerich issue.
We have a lot of, from, uh, the mission.
Okay.
We did, because we can call them as a today, and, um, that will come after.
Okay.
I noticed in the notes that you talked about the finance team, and I know that there's always several teams throughout the district that we reference, but nobody knows who these teams are, or what they're doing, and we did, I just, we should have that, finance team, leadership team, you know?
The finance team is relatively small.
Is it you?
My shell, Chelsea, Percy, Morgan, and, and then who does it, unstable, so it's unstable, payroll, what I like to call Chelsea as my controller, and then myself.
I, I understand that, but the public doesn't know that, so when they look at this, they have no idea who that is. We always refer.
We always refer to these people and sometimes we don't really know. And sometimes we get information of a decision that this team made, but we don't know who or how it came about.
Well, make sure I include it on the tablet.
If you have more questions, sorry. Um, when I was looking through this, and this, it goes back to something I tried to bring up a while back, and it started off, and it just gets so long, I forget it. But I noticed on our, uh, this financial follow-up, this account that's been assigned to, um, the board, and all of these flyers and mailings quote for the board. Uh, it's obviously not understood that the board didn't okay, approve, create, mail, or come up with the language of anything that was sent to public. I gave one suggestion on one thing I was taught, and they didn't make it. So again, when people look at this, they think, oh, well, the board did all that, because it's underestimating, says for the board, the board never approved any of that. The board said, yeah, we should communicate, yeah, we should be doing that, so going forward, let's don't do any of that unless the board says, yep, this is what the board said. Because it's happened with surveys, it's happened with, uh, things that went out for district communication, and the board knows nothing about it until it's on the report or the community sends its email. Wants to know why we did it. So I would appreciate that, because I'm really disappointed in the amount we spent. And at least the one thing I asked to be explained was the offset of the property tax, so that the district will understand that they are only responsible for about thirty percent of what we were asking, which would have been three million, because the state would have picked up, the state would have picked up seven million, right?
The, the state would have heard this year, I think it was two point four, three seven, so that would have lasted seven.
It's kind of the other way around.
Other way around, there you go. Whatever it was, they, they didn't understand that. That wasn't explicitly explained. And that was the one thing I asked, please create just an equation, so they would know that's what it was. Um, so that's the only thing I asked, going forward, if we can do that. It was the flyer you brought me with all the text, it came in an envelope.
There was an equation, huh?
If there was, no, we saw it. There was a lot of text.
Jessica, do you have any follow-up, or any course comments to Emmerich?
Like, hi. So, Emmerich Construction did the buildings for, uh, we, outside renovation for Appleton's early. That company has failed to pay its subcontractors, which are the letters that are right here. So our attorney sent, submitted to Emmerich, that went unanswered. And also sent a letter to the Surety Bonds Company that has also done unanswered. So at this point, I have followed up with our attorney to see next steps, so that we can continue to do this for, so that the subcontractors, that Emmerich fails to pay, will get paid. Sorry.
Anything directly to Emmerich?
They have their bond here.
Are they still active or gone?
They, through that phone, but nobody is available to talk. No, not, there is, uh, on my research, there's multiple lawsuits, we're not the only one in this bill.
Thank you, Jessica.
Do you get any comments too?
Oh, there we are. Facilities update. Any questions, comments, conversations? Would you like to add that question?
Is there any update on the concrete of the district?
Uh, we did send out Lakeland High School meeting on concrete to respond. Um, definitely don't leave, uh, we don't want to do anything before it starts going next week. Potentially start, um, the rest of them are ready to go out to get it this spring. We have various specific scope work specifications, so that all of the bids will be the same, um, the same even playing field. Yes, it's ready to go. Again, I believe all the work will be done next summer.
So, I'm sorry. So we're not getting bids yet on?
We do get bids for Lakeland High School, hoping that we would be able to do that before the snow showed up. But with how much weather we are having right now, it's not advisable, like concrete.
I, I understand that, but why not have it done and re, have the bids done and ready?
They'll be ready.
Have it lined up for all the other projects?
And we're releasing.
Before the snow melts?
And we're releasing that one in January for the rest of.
Why are we waiting?
I could do it now, I just don't think the companies will hear it to your place, but hard to announce.
Okay.
We can ask, right? You can always ask.
Nothing else on facilities? Moving on to the T H S Fields House update. Oh, sorry.
Can you please explain why we chose core construction before we got any bids for any projects? It, it's just a que, I want that question posed, because it's a question I'm getting a lot.
So what the process for, because the district does not have a construction manager on staff or a general contractor on staff, the process for this, the typical process for a project like this is typical, or a cert, a, a construction manager or a general contractor. Typically, you do that, and then with that company, you select an architect. And then the architect sets up a design that's within the budget that you write up here. This project is a little bit different, that's gone a little bit ahead of order, because there are so many donations. We still have to follow ideal statute. So we go out.
Could you tell me what statute that is?
I can forget from the next meeting. It's part of the documentation, uh, isn't previous court packets, but, um, we'd be happy to break that, and a breakdown of what processes we follow when construction projects are over two hundred thousand dollars. I did have a conversation with Port, Chanel Tuesday, and they are moving forward with the formal bid process, so that we can get a final dollar for what it will cost. Um, everything that's now is then their best estimate, um, it has not officially gone out to bid yet.
So the bids are being opened in a public meeting?
It will be once that process is completed. And the district will participate in that process and help select vendors. That is a requirement of the process.
Yep.
Any other conversation on the T H S Fieldhouse?
No.
Moving on to our new business action items. We have board policy first, uh, board policy thirty-four hundred, forty-one forty, forty-four twenty, and seventy-four hundred. Thirty-four hundred is our drug and alcohol testing students and activities. This policy was asked to come back to change one word, which was under number six on page four, to change will to may. That, and this policy did not go out for public input, as it seemed to be more of a clear change. Is there any comment, questions, or whatnot on policy thirty-four hundred?
Yes. Um, I have one here, because actually I think there were a couple of changes. Uh, one did go from the will to the may, or whatever it was. Um, but there was also the strike at his herd with the victim up there, I really wish we would have moved that. And the other thing is, is I think that this policy makes it really hard for a lot of our students in the district to participate in sports, and especially those that I think would benefit from being in sports. Um, because of some of the failure, they could victim, something like that. Um, and I think that we have students that may join or become part of the team environment that this pushes away. Just, I, I think it's, I think we do a lot of.
Well, given that drug testing is an expense to the district, this may become obsolete, I don't know.
Point two, yeah. Another question. I think, I do, I think it's detrimental, I think it's detrimental to our student body. I think it alienates students who would benefit from being more involved, um, and become more and more against team. Um, you know, for punishing, and I understand it's illegal, victim, and it's bad things I get all that. But just to hate and hate against this vague machine, I, I just don't see the outcome being, what they can do better.
Jill.
Yeah.
If you get a reason for changing, uh, will, I think I didn't hear, what, what was the reason for the change?
An incident that happened at one of the high schools where, um, if I recall correctly, a student had come forward that they had been dishonest, and because the way the policy was worded as a will, the student became ineligible instead of acknowledging that the student did the right thing. And maybe there'd be less of a consequence than eligibility. But we took that out of the hands of the activities director of coaches by saying will. So they asked for it to change to may, so that they could use their discretion on how to resolve a situation like that.
I hope they don't get caught in a reversal question.
Anything else on thirty-four hundred? Moving down to forty-one forty, visitors to schools. This policy was reworked and did go out for, uh, input.
I'm sorry. Can we, can we submit that other policy to the community? I would like to see what the parents and the communities have input on there.
Okay. Would it be appropriate, given the minor change that was made, to be willing to accept the minor change, but still to the policy?
Yeah, yeah.
Does anybody have any input, comments, or conversation on forty-one forty?
Pretty clear.
Next policy is forty-four twenty, which is our sex offenders policy. This one as well went into community. There was no confusion, um, based on bullet point two, which I think it is still two. Go back up here. Marianne, did we take that out? The reside of the state licensed or certified facility for incarceration?
That's not it.
Okay. So we cleared it out? Is there any answer, comment?
Is this the one that you're talking about? That on page two resides?
Page two, possibly. Yes, that's the one I'm talking about. It's bullet point A on page two. Um, there was a lot of confusion about the fact that a person may live within five hundred feet of a school, um, when they reside in state licensed or certified facility. That is direct language from statute, that is not something they created. Any other comments, questions, what else?
Can we not use, can we please not?
Hello?
Can we please not use abbreviations, especially in our policies? There's S R O and A D S S. Um, not everybody knows what those are. And you don't, and it's not said that it is what an S R O is earlier in the document, so it shouldn't be just S R O.
So what page is that on?
On page three. I've asked time and time and time again that we not use abbreviations for things. I, I despise abbreviations, especially when they're not stated earlier what it is.
I agree. So you're asking for those to be filled out, correct? Yes, please. Moving on to seventy-four hundred procurement management system. This was brought forward by CFO, Grantham. Language changes, I believe, were made, because it didn't suit our district, but she did go back through it, and it did come to policy, and we did chat about it. So it is in line with the way our other policies are. Any questions on policy seventy-four hundred?
Yeah.
Alright, in order for a motion to approve board policy thirty-four hundred as presented, and to be sent out from page and input, policy forty-one forty as presented, policy forty-four twenty as presented with the modifications of identifying what an S R O and A D S S is, and policy seventy-four hundred as presented.
Make a motion?
That was my motion. So we have a motion. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to supplemental curriculum.
Can we please use accurate letterhead with the superintendent's actual new last name? New as if two, three years ago, whenever that was, please? The memo to the board, the board agenda request item? On this supplemental curriculum, I understand that at least one reviewer had concerns on some of these items. So I want to take a second to remind everyone, especially parents, that they have the right to opt out of books that they don't want their children reading.
Any comments or conversations on the supplemental curriculum?
That one, yeah, that is.
Ramona, can you hit that back? There's no battery batteries.
I'll figure it out. I'll make lots of weird noises and figure it out.
I move we approve the supplemental curriculum as presented.
Second, may I?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Two in favor, three opposed. Motion carries.
May I, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Is it possible, is it the entire list that we have concerned about or are there books up here?
I was just going to open it up for consideration. That's okay. Would we like to have more discussion on this or looking forward to a different motion?
I vote to table.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Four in favor, three opposed. Motion carries. So the list is tabled. Moving on to the table books. These books were tabled initially by Assistant Superintendent Haslam. She hasn't brought forward the reasons why they were tabled to begin with. So I'm not really sure why these were put back on without any input from Assistant Superintendent Haslam.
She anticipated she was not going to be here tonight, but is unable to be. She tabled the books because there were some concerns related by patrons. And we had staff who wanted to be able to address these concerns before we went forward. That's the purpose. And Janelle Exter is here to provide comments.
Well, she provided a letter that just basically-
Janelle, is this letter written by you? Okay.
Yes, but there's, I added a little bit more to it because one of the teachers did not be here tonight. So she's checking her reasons. So I gave the new copy to Maria so that she could put it on the agenda. So I'm just going to start from the beginning. Good evening, Board Chair Thompson, Vice Chair Payne, trustee Superintendent Tyler. I'm here tonight to speak in support of three books, Pay It Forward by Catherine Ryan Hyde, The Fault in Our Stars by John Green, and Speak by Laurie Hallis Anderson. I would like to thank you for tabling these books and told the teachers to use these books in their classrooms. And I could be here to address any questions you may have regarding them. Regarding Pay It Forward, Catherine Ryan Hyde, our buyer Catherine Ryan Hyde, this book was actually used for its time in the elementary schools when it was case for sale. The books were then sent to the middle schools when we acquired sixth grade. I'm not sure where it concerns by from this book, and looking back at some of the comments made regarding the book, most references were to the adult version. The book is used in the middle schools in the young readers edition, which meant it's out language and any inappropriate material that may be in the adult version. I just finished reading the book and I came across no foul language or anything inappropriate within the pages. I found it to be an uplifting story despite the tragedy that plays out near the end. Book is based on an extrapreviate assignment by a new teacher. Come up with an idea to change the world for the better and one student's attempt to do just that. Some of the themes running through this book are perseverance, kindness, hope, generosity, forgiveness, acceptance, or antecipance. I found this to be a book that would make kids think about their place in the world and how they can help make a difference. Regarding The Fault in Our Stars by John Green and Speak by Laurie Hallis Anderson, both books are used only by our eighth grade honors classes, ELEA classes. And I think Anne has been used in our school for quite some time. Speak since two thousand and seventeen and The Fault in Our Stars since two thousand and nineteen. These books are used for lip circles, which means only some of the class will read them as others may choose a different book. And parents are given the choice to opt in or opt out of the reading of these books. Both books are set in the real world with real life problems and storylines that many teens face today. Speak by Laurie Hallis Anderson is the story of a teenage girl who was assaulted at the end of a summer party and who calls the police but ends up fleeing the scene before they arrive. As she begins her freshman year in high school, she is shunned by her parents as they learn she is the one who called the police. The story, however, is not so much about the assault. It is only mentioned twice and then only in the very, very, very briefest of terms. But it's more about the impact it has on the main character and her unwillingness to speak up. It's definitely a good book to use for character study because of how she reacts and responds to those around her, especially her family as they're prone to her pain. But it is her art teacher who helps her find her voice, allowing her to speak up and finally tell someone what happened. The Fault in Our Stars by John Green is the story of two teenagers battling cancer who meet up at a teen cancer support group. The book addresses the complexities of living with cancer in the twenty-first century and captures the emotions and physical struggles faced by the two main characters who are dealing with this illness. Not only does the story follow them to as they get to know one another and find friendship and love despite the significant challenges they face from their diagnoses, they learn to lean into each other, which makes them both realize they are not alone in their battle. Some of the themes touched on in this book deal with life and death, coming of age, moral values, insensitivity, and courage. Books do deal with formative themes and subject matter, which is why they are used only for the eighth grade honors and ELEA classes. These two books make our students think, create conversations and open dialogue about difficult subjects. Both books have won numerous awards and continue to be very popular among middle and high school set. I have read all three books. Speak and The Fault in Our Stars I have read numerous times. And all of these books are appropriate for classroom use at the middle school level. Carla Hecklin, who is commencing Speak and The Fault in Our Stars, is here to write to answer any questions you may have. Kate Harold, who wishes to use Pay It Forward could not be here tonight, but she sent along her reasons for using this book in the classroom. Kate writes, seventh grade has been trying to find a great appropriate book that is challenged with modern day themes. Both sixth and eighth grades have these books, but seventh grade is in desperate need of a book that is realistic fiction without being a classic or historical. It has been very hard to find and Pay It Forward fills the bill perfectly. And even better, we already have net books for two seventh grade assets. Here is the rationale from an instructional point of view. The book is told from the ambition point of view, which means it is told through all the characters of the story. This is ideal for helping seventh graders understand how perspective is unique to each of us. The story is quite simple in theme, but it is impactful in the reach of the theme. The book truly establishes that we can all do great extraordinary things while being just an ordinary person or student. The message that we are all capable of amazing things is quite moving. The characters are very relatable for middle schoolers as the main character happens to be a seventh grader and the other main character is his teacher. It is a very cool story to help students see the connections we have at school, at home, and our community. We all contribute to the immediate world we live in and that is shown throughout the story. The biggest teachable moments come with theme because the idea that we can all make elastic large difference even with the smallest voice is worthy of reading this book. The notion of a random act of kindness is compelling. Finally, this is a great companion to A Christmas Carol, which we read in December. It is, it is like a modern reading story about the spirit of kindness and giving like a Christmas Carol. Thank you, thank you so much. Carla, she's up there at the top and she can answer any questions if you have about Speak or The Fault in Our Stars?
Thank you.
Do we know what the assault is that takes place in the book? Speak, it just says the girl was assaulted, but I don't know what the assault was.
She was raped by a high school senior at a college party. Or not a college party, but a summer party by a high school senior.
High school party. So I'm very curious for people to come back and watch. She was raped by?
Raped by like a high school senior.
A high school senior?
Raped by a high school senior, yeah, at a high school party.
At a high school party, incoming student?
It was like an incoming freshman and it was like her senior and they were having a party. And she was attacked by her.
Nothing was ever, it never describes the attack, never says anything like that.
It was awesome. The girl was, you know, in a position to play, in the current state that she's in at the beginning of the story. So that the rest of the book, the book stuck at like her program recovery, finding her voice. It was very impactful. And again, it's not a book that I would ever feel comfortable bringing to an entire classroom. It is why I would have used it. But in the senior honors class, we deliver circles, parents need to send home detailed summaries. We told them to look at that, we all let their parents walk out and go to the classroom. So we always have in at least three or four that have been, and they like it. So the parents have been.
Thank you.
Some of us see the movie because there's a movie.
There's a movie, awesome.
Yeah.
I just said, I agree, so whoever watches the video would have been a little bit. Thank you.
Move to a review session of the conference president.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Two in favor, three opposed. Motion fails.
I wanted, I was trying to find it now that I have the complete story. I want to go back and forth about the comments that originally came in and I'm trying to find the sources for it.
No problem. I'll make a motion to table these books until we have the supporting documents from the initial, when they brought them forward, the first time.
Second.
Play.
We have, and do you require a motion?
No, the motion failed.
It failed.
Yeah. So that was like, I motioned to table. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the mention athletic schedule. Any questions, comments, input with schedules?
Board chair, I don't have my microphone. But the Lakeland Middle School eighth grade basketball was not complete.
At the time that we had opposed, they, the AEs for that league had not completed the grade basketball schedules. And so those were not included in the schedule.
So are these not to be approved?
They should be approved. I just want you and I have to agree for one more second.
They'll be settled for now.
Okay.
Move over.
Second, last second.
We have a motion in a second by the hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to student clubs, Rising Star Outreach. I have a question. Nowhere in here, nowhere in here does it say what Rising Star is. And I'm just trying to confirm when I did search it because it says, what is the purpose of the club? It's sharing the mission of Rising Star Outreach through social media, school club meetings, and community fundraising events. What I found was Rising Star is about leprosy. So is, are you aware of that? No. It's raising awareness for leprosy. So I was just curious if you have a large correlation with leprosy?
I don't know what you mean.
Okay.
I'll move to table. I will move to table this until we get more information on exactly what Rising Star Outreach is.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the Panhandle Health District MOU. We have an end of MOU and a tobacco cessation contract.
And these are just our annual regular, these MOUs. And these are, we use their information for our tobacco cessation. Why is this stuff that we teach in high schools when it is kind of making provision? Making it more sustainable, making it more efficient?
With respect to the independent contractor agreement, I'm trying to understand because it does not state in here, but there is a reference to compensation. So I'm trying to figure out, are we paying them, are they paying us? What, what is the compensation?
I don't see them now. But I believe that there is a stipend from the department or the teachers who make that contract. Okay. There's, oh. There's a small stipend for the instructors from the Panhandle Health to the instructors outside of their contract. That's at the top of the page.
The top of which page?
It's the contractor agreement. There's a $4,000 contract amount from the Panhandle Health District to offer it on the...
Okay. Okay, so the whole contract's for $4,000 for the entire program. Okay, and the contracted amount, though, is for payment to the district? Or to the, to the contractor? Because we're not the district in this thing. The district is Panhandle Health District in this contract. Okay.
I think we have this decision before. So students would, exactly however we use this. If the student gets caught making or something, then they could go take this class, pay the 40 bucks, and...
In lieu of being cited by law enforcement?
Oh.
That's a, that's apparent, yeah, and that's definitely a apparent decision of having one of them around.
So explain to me this whole process. So we, a student that's caught making at the high school, then what happens? We're out at the park in the library. There's usually a conversation, parents call, and then if it's a first offense, they offer this rather than citing by law enforcement for having an illegal substance. That's cool. If they've already done this, then the making continues. It's a conversation between the administrator and your parents about how to proceed. And because to your point earlier, we're talking about making, it's just kind of addictive. And so this because it's caught once doesn't mean they're not going to struggle to stop. So the parents are part of this the whole way. Okay, that is just for grades. So we catch it, and we call law enforcement because why? Because it's illegal to have illegal substances per default property. They're not going to participate in use, use those. All right, so now we're cited making, taking this class, preparing degrees, and then who did they pay the $40 to? Us or the paying them? Who, our teachers are giving the passes and the $40 goes to who? Our teachers or Panhandle and the Panhandle, or do you personally go through or?
No, I, I would follow up with what I'm, that's what I think. I don't know where this is going to be, and I'm looking around, and I don't see any of our instructors. But I believe that money goes to us, district. Again, we use that to purchase materials for the course. But I don't care for that.
I would like to see the post superior, the post survey, and everything else that we have in school. It's, you know, very rich, because I want to know the factors in it. I mean, most of this is, I mean, I understand the convenience of it, and a lot of it is because of the post superior. So it's very, this whole, this whole.
And I am curious, on their in-depth MOU, it just says background, and then there's an option we're checking. That's the in-depth MOU. We're not missing something? Okay. I move to table till more information is provided.
Second. We have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to the counseling MOUs. There's one for Up North and one for Drag and Fly. Open it up for conversation.
Move to approve the MOUs for Up North, Motion and Fly.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Name. Two in favor, three opposed, motion fails. Is there anything else? Any other motion that would like to be brought forward on the counseling MOUs? Or any further discussion? Discussion, please. Nothing further? We will move on to the SSC contract for an interim facilities director. I'd like to know, is it your recommendation to hire this company at the rate of $5,085 to lead?
We, when we had the conversation prior, we didn't know what the cost was going to be. And so I'm not comfortable with the amount of money. However, just so the public is aware of this, why we brought it forward, we had an interim director who stepped down, and we have some work to do on our tenure plan so that we can get it. So they can receive our $18 million facilities money so we can start collecting interest on that, on that lot of money. And we are in the industry who has some construction management background. So we have two options. The intent behind this was, let's see what it would cost to bring somebody in that has a temporary person who can help us with this process, why we hire somebody. And also have a set of eyes on our job description, make sure we're asking for the right law enforcement. So we could do that and hire somebody for, in the short term, so we have some leadership in that part. We don't have a director right now. Jessica is the interim director, and she's loving everything that that has. That's definitely not her real house. And the other option is we don't do that, and the board just directs us to post our job description and post the position and try to get somebody hired. But those are our two options.
Who's very good line for the paperwork?
I have a meeting with Hannah from Assisting here with us to help answer some of these questions. I believe the paperwork is ready for someone to start on Monday, the 18th. If we decide to go back out, I'm sure they would be flexible with us. This was never meant to be a long-term solution. It was literally just to help us bridge the gap.
I agree with my guess. If that didn't lie for us to have any...
Maybe if it arrived December 12th, then we wouldn't be able to get a portion up to 8% of that $18 million, which would be to the benefit of the district, because then we wouldn't collect interest on that money versus losing out on that opportunity.
Right, so outside of the interest that we wouldn't be able to collect, we're not foregoing $18 million if we don't do this by December, well, whatever you say.
Correct. The next step in work is in February, but we would have to wait for the next bond issuance from the state in order to get any funding. So there is a possibility that we would not receive funding until next fiscal year, which would not allow us to turn down projects with that $18 million this coming summer.
Right, understood. So I just have a few things to say about that. A couple of things, I kind of hard believe that we have no real interest with any knowledge to help pull out warrants in our district. You and I are going to sit down and look at some of these because I'm different. The other thing is, is for, I'll give you five years instead of six, according to Title 331613, I've been saying every year, by statute, we are legally responsible to have every school inspected with a report. Had that been happening, we could have transposed those inspections, which were legally required to do and have happened to happen, onto this paperwork. So why? Well, I mean, according to what the state has in the, I mean, there might be some things, but we would be a lot further off. And one, my answer is, we've been saying over and over and over, we're supposed to do what we're supposed to do. We have a policy, statute tells us. So that's why I'm quite frustrated with the whole thing. So we need to do that, and then we just need to fix all these things. My recommendation would be to run an ad for somebody to see if we can get somebody on board. Let's look at the paperwork. We have a huge community. There is nobody in the community that can help us with any of this. There's not somebody, you know? I agree. Yes, that's what I said last time. Yeah, I mean, we did have a facilities record. We do have some of this information, like you said, but not towards the in-depth. I did look over all of the templates. I gathered from the state. I briefly went over what you had supplied, but I just can't believe that we cannot find anybody in the whole of the county or the county to help us fill out this paperwork.
I think you're right. With the example, now if somebody could, you're counting on them. I have a question to ask. Did you run out the diocesan week and what is it supposed to be for the year?
All right, well, we previously discussed this, the projected budget. We bought 1,000,000 or $30,000. But I wonder if we have someone hired and replaced by the end of April, we would see within the projected budget, he's...
It's crazy. The problem is the term of this contract. Has anybody read that? It's one year.
It is not one year. As you're writing up a company, we do have the option to set out it at any time under the days' notice.
You're suggesting that we go as far as April or November?
I would prefer to do it later. I think it would be important for our facilities department to have a permanent solution in place for our department, for the district as a whole, the custody system. While we were looking at our, the information out of the surveys for the tenure plan, is it tied to our revenue matrix? And so that's part of the difficulty that we are having. Yes, probably find someone in the county to help us with it. They will turn this as well. They will, they will do this on our...
We can get volunteers. We can get volunteers. And I mean, every time we get a volunteer, you guys put roadblocks in our way to get stuff done.
Thing about a volunteer is they're only as good as long as they want to be. They can walk off the job if they can't work. With the exception of school, they volunteer, but we're going to stay. Have you had any conversation by chance that are firm, how they need help with this?
I can, Architect's West did a lot for a person like this. They provided updated square footage. We had some pretty old building numbers based on renovations that were done that didn't include their corporate square footage. So we did work with Architect's West a month. I would be happy to reach out to them at all and see if you would provide some additional support there.
My advice connection is to move forward with hiring our own facilities director. And we use a different option to try to get the help that we need to break the state requirement. I haven't seen those forms, I guess, because they're likely involved. So having a professional system, I think, could be worthwhile, even with the way I've been paid.
The members will be attending? Is that the workshop, or is it a special work meeting?
It's workshop. I believe it's a workshop.
So we cannot take action with that meeting?
We can add action to that meeting.
So if your plans are over that meeting, would you consent to take action on it?
As long as I know about it. About it before you start the meeting?
Okay.
Did you make mention?
Yes, we moved, we moved forward with advertising for our own facilities director. We got a person in place, and we reach out to our, our professional advice and playing their primary state record.
We have a motion in the second. Ramona, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
You're welcome.
That concludes the action items. Moving on to discussion items. We were provided, we were provided the facility handbook and the transportation handbook. Any thoughts, inputs, comments?
I would just like to say that I am very appreciative and grateful for all the work and how much strides we have in making the documentation and the supers and putting everything in one place and making this year to find for everybody. It's really much greater.
It's really much greater.
And I think it's the facility handbook. If we could remove individuals' names and put their titles, I think that would help when there's transitions. So we're not stuck with the wrong name of the book. But thank you for providing these. It's great to see that we actually have them.
Do you have a question on the custodial slash maintenance staff? The facilities director supervised buildings and grounds. Is that what you're looking?
He's not what? What page?
Major, it is.
Oh, there's no pages.
Yeah, there was maybe on those contracts here. It's on, it's in the custodial and maintenance. I think it's the second meeting, yeah, the second meeting of the staff. That is the year. Did the, the attached job district bits, were those looked over by somebody in those compartments? These were like the latest? Do you know that?
I, I do not. The superintendent has things on the board and on the spec.
To first speakers, who's in the morning? Maybe it's in our outstanding mention of annual delay inspection report.
I'm a state safety inspector. Grant, do you, you happen to know in the, in the book that we have the annual state safety inspection of buildings in Kansas? The facilities handbook?
Well, my word is that it's for the state. That's not what I was referring to. I was referring to statute and trustees are responsible, not the state. But trustees are responsible for annual inspection. All buildings owned by.
Right, but we do, we are annually inspected by state inspectors. After I was from, there are mystery. So it's two different inspections.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. And I will verify that the job description is our most prominent.
Yeah, those are all policies. We've got policy eighty-five twenty attached, which is what you're referencing. Any further conversations on the handbooks? Moving on to the current executed M O Us for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
There were a couple that are not linked in because I did not have them in my environment. Obviously, and then found out that they had been sent to us. So I, there now, obviously, and first, she has the binder. I have a five year, so the hard copies are there. And they are going to take this document, the light.
Where is this document going to be housed?
Where would you like it? I can post it on the website.
It should be. It should be.
Under board?
Board, yeah, yes, please. Anything else on the current executed M O Us? Moving on to the curriculum data update.
Dr. Pesner was so excited to be able to share this with you. And she was lucky to be here. But so a couple of things that she asked me to point out. For the first time since I've been an administrator in this district, we will have article alignment with essential standards A eight, completed by June twenty twenty-five. Then did the first ever data data with high school principals and teams to look at high school E L A and math data to help drive instructional decisions of that level. And then we also will have our university design survey A to the government. And then next year will be on high schools. But the conversations that she's been having with teachers about the standards, what does that look like instructionally? How are we assessing that? So we're assessing the same way because that's been a desire of this board is to have consistency across districts. So right now, we're comparing, accurate one inch means the same thing as it does agile ground and they accomplished that. So there's a lot of really good work. I think, and you mentioned it in the last meeting, that our sports are coming up. And it's this constitutionality of the work that's been done that is helping us to occur. So there's a lot to celebrate.
Any further discussion on the curriculum data update? Moving on to the twenty-four, twenty-five curricular advisory committee.
So Lynn just wanted to share through this is the next agenda. So we are at a high school, middle school level. We have teachers who are piloting the C I commercial studies. And so she just checked in and see how the pilot is going, how cross strikes and weaknesses and aligning the standards. And then just update the board so you can kind of see what we're doing process.
It would be good to know it's all in the meeting. Any other comment or discussion points? Moving on to the fall activity drug test results. Any comments or conversations on these?
No, it seems like there was a flip flop and, seems like there was a flip flop in who had some positive tests as opposed to last year. So good job, T H S, on getting that straightened out. Maybe you can give L H S some ideas.
Any other comments or discussions? Moving on to the student council leadership conference agenda.
So the board, this is reminding the board for the first time this year has approved the travel for our core curricular groups. But there was a conversation between, I can't remember if it was last spring or early in the summer, that we would like to see the agendas that are associated with those trips. And so the leadership agenda was just really sorry to provide any of your information.
Thank you for providing the information. Do we need to have a discussion on this? Last day is the fourth Christmas event. Every year we say we're going to do something unusual. It's at the December four meeting. So it might be a little better if you were more proactive if we wanted to do anything. If we don't, that's fine as well. But I thought I'd put it on the agenda to have a conversation. Always. You are nodding. Yes, possible action items for discussion after our Christmas party. Are we not going to do one this year? And we can like table it and like let it go.
Until next year.
All right, so we'll forego anything for Christmas until maybe next year. It's only been, what, six years that we've tried? Okay. Possible action items for discussion for next meeting?
I'd like to recommend that we have.
Yeah. Closer.
Closer. Recommend that we have meetings, board meetings like more.
Okay.
So we get Timberlake now, we'll call it board meetings once in a while.
Okay. You would like to bring in the board meeting up north to Timberlake, into the Timberlake community so that.
I didn't say now, I said once in a while.
Once in a while?
Once every two months or three months, I don't know.
Well, I would think with the fact that we're going to go to holding more board meetings, more board workshops, we could flip them up there and flip them back and forth.
Right.
So is everybody agreeing moving forward with that?
Yep.
That doesn't require action. Make sure you know that. The Veterans Day assembly scheduled has long passed, but thank you for the information.
That was great.
I did, it was not several. I think it's right, it was. So I, I do appreciate board members when you guys are able to attend the nine-year-old busy and work and have other responsibilities. But we got some of the nice compliments from the community members. The gentleman, Frank Apple, who has been, he reached out to us, he already led it and he has great questions and has a little relationship. And in twenty twenty-three, I had a first to attend one of our assemblies, which he did this year, so he emailed me to thank the writer and have it. And it was humbling and very much appreciated. And so the theme from people who reached out to me was, I really appreciate my kids are so involved in the assemblies and that they have a opportunity to say thank you face to face to our.
What's among our dates to remember is our next board workshop, which is November twentieth. Would you like to move that one up north or do you want to keep it here? Day. We'll schedule that front door so we can start moving about the country.
Provided the, provided the facility is available?
Provided the facility is available. And if it is not available, then we will see if.
Or maybe there's another facility.
There is another facility that might be available.
Middle school, the high school.
Are we okay with elementary schools?
No, I would prefer it be the high schools or the middle schools. That's my premise. What? Ryan said that all this stuff is there. According to.
For that date.
Well, I don't know about the date. Just an idea.
So we will work on making sure the community knows where we will be so that they can attend.
We use a different mic than you. It's really difficult to compare what's going on here.
It's the mics.
That's a combination of both. I think we could have a lighter or someplace where you don't get all this. It would be easier.
Well, we don't want to run into a position where we can't let people come in because it's probably, if you saw the crowd that was here at the beginning, they wouldn't fit in all the way.
By the way, have you, uh, had, or should what the format of this meeting as well?
It's a workshop. So we'll be bringing conversations to the table. We'll probably be revealing all the emails we've gotten, all the input that we've been receiving.
Are you going to have to send them on public input?
Well, wouldn't necessarily need public input. They'd be at the table having a conversation with us.
Because it's a workshop.
It's a workshop. They can participate. They can participate. Does that make sense to you? Oh, I just want to make sure. Does that make sense though? That's why.
Are you saying you're putting a high candidate?
Yes, well, a lot of the conversation is what I'm hoping for. I mean, brainstorming ideas and us looking at what we've got to work with. Okay. One of the things that I would like from Jessica is this year, we ask all the buildings to look at their budgets and redigs. I'd really like to see what everybody did because I'm hearing that some people, like Lakeland High School, I understand, cut their budget by about a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if other schools do the same. That's what I'm hearing. I don't know if it's factual because I've not seen anything. So it would be beneficial for the board to see where students have already chosen to make cuts for this school year because we did decrease the budget this year. Is, is that an option? Okay, perfect. Is there any future agenda items that people want to have on board? Or on each agenda for the board?
I was going to add one, but the conver, I was going to add one, but the conversation came up tonight. So I don't, I don't need to now.
So anything to do with the levy or results, whatever, which was pretty good workshop? Because I was going to address it tonight, but there was already a part of that. I'm very concerned with that. My people, my neighbors, my friends, my family, my community, really are taking the front of levy and, and that's fine, whatever. However, when I link people up, the numbers receives two oh one, three oh one, two oh two, three oh two, two oh three, three oh three, two oh four, which represents my family and friends. Two of the precincts gave them for two hundred eighty-nine, which was passable. The names were forty-five hundred and forty-nine. So the net effect of the north, which everybody wants to cut off of the needs. I mean, I'm not in the business of just, oh, my family, it was out, it's become free. And if anybody goes with the history of the district, we've always been fifty fifty, even all the way through COVID, fifty fifty half, fifty fifty vaccine. It's always been fifty fifty. So the net effect of the north into the district was three thousand one hundred and sixty. So there's a deficit of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five. And we have the entire community's vote, no. So I understand that people are frustrated. So I understand that people are frustrated and whatever, but we can't just cut each other off. It's not possible, you know? Because we disagree or there's a disagreement and we have to try and make the best of it. And both of, um, there are some things, I guess, I can share for that. There was a lot of questions, um, to be personally addressed to from on that. Why did your community do this? I was preparing answers tonight, right, and say it. Um, and I'll take that, that's fine. But there was one email we all received from a student that hit the nail on the head. I was like, Rob, this young man, because he asked, in half of his sentence, the sentence of the majority of the district, half, we'll say, he said, and he was particularly talking about extracurriculars, and the one thing he was pointing out was music, which I guess the majority of people don't understand is actually required by statute. We have music, we have to have music. However, he was upset that he thought music was needed. So he said in there, "Without these programs, speaking of this music, I struggle to see school as anything more than a government-operated prison focused only on education." That, he's right, and that's what most people are crying about. That's what most people, mostly complaints I've heard, and people feel that would make worrying concerns. Their blog on social media, their, uh, comments or their, whatever they're writing on the YouTube video is deleted, right? I mean, they haven't deleted or the owner of the account does, and theirs are. In fact, I tried to get the information from the one, uh, person that reached out to me because they were to the point where they just gave up, but I convinced them to at least give me the numbers. You know, their numbers are being directed from the state, but the official handbook on YouTube response person was trying to say that they were big numbers. Here's the thing, I know this sounds petty, but we have a whole half of our district that feels like every time they say something, they're blocked out, cut off, ridiculed, whatever. We're gonna disagree. The only thing we work things out is to disagree and work through the disagreement, right? And they're just to a point, like you said, that they have no other choice. They just don't, they're, they're out of options. They don't know what else to do. I mean, we have people sitting on the board that, like, the same thing, they were blocked out of meetings, they were taken away their volunteer positions. So, you know, it's the ugly stuff, but the guy couldn't get it under the table and you just have to bring it out. Because a lot of my days, I keep saying the same thing, over and over and over and over and over, and finding this time, it's totally no. Because they're frustrated, you know, they don't know what else to do. So one person had asked me, well, many people have asked me to share why my community did that. So what I hear from my community is just that, and much more gossiped, right, so, uh, that was a couple of things I had to share tonight, and I'll save them for next, um, for next time. But I'm really concerned, I really don't want this student to think that we're gonna take away these. You know, there's certain things we have to give the students first, actually, you know, and it frustrates me that our students are bearing adult conversations. They shouldn't even be talking about this stuff. If they want to talk at their own home, that's fine, but teachers shouldn't be having conversations. Teachers should be putting them back to their parents to have a conversation. Um, so I just, I don't want to go there anymore. No more. We're gonna fix it, we're gonna make it better, we're gonna figure it out. That's, uh, that's all I have to share right now.
Anybody else have anything? On that note, I will go ahead and end the meeting. Um, well, actually, we're going to end the regular session. And I need a motion to go into executive session.
What Idaho code? What code is it? Seventy-four, two oh six, one?
B.
One B.
So we have a motion.
So moved. For Idaho code seventy-four, two oh six, one B.
And we have a second?
May.
From Dave? We need a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Bain?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
Trustee Grissom? Trustee Jones?
Yes. On that note, um, we will adjourn to executive session. It is eight thirty-seven.
Where are we? How do we have that here?
All right, so we've come out of executive session, and we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It's ten thirty-one.